Members, if you would come to your seats. Mr. Plattenberg, we're happy to have you here. Good. All right, if board members were all go to their seats, we can get started and we can move things along. Mr. Plattenberg, I think this was something that is, was on his new business and is contemplated to be voted on. Remind me, Madam Chair, on September 26th, is that when this is going to be voted on? We've had it as new business. We had a conversation about it at the board table the other night. There was a desire on the part of school board members to have a bit more of a presentation on what it is that we're doing. So, Mr. Plattenberg, if you would try, if you would just briefly summarize where we are and what this CIP amendment is about.
Let me go, Mr. Plattenberg, before you begin. The Honorable Jeff Plattenberg and the Honorable Marty Smith. Okay. It's important to continue to build partnership. We had a work session in July. I was asked to bring a list of hotspots. The following day, I got an email from one of the board members, CC the rest of the board, about a hotspot, which was McLean. I didn't receive any others, and I brought it forth, and it was brought to chairs and it was brought to the board at the last agenda meeting. Ms. Strauss also, I believe, sent it out again, not just the day after the work session in July, but a day or two before the board meeting. So, the board knew that this hotspot was coming. I only received one, and that's the why only one came forward. I did later that evening, on Thursday night, Mr. Wilson brought me some potential other hotspots, Chantilly, Centerville, and Oakton, and asked me to look at those, though they are in the CIP, as he's referenced. And so, if you go to the CIP, and I believe it's page 64, right?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Excuse me, I transpose my numbers. I, no, 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 the other one that we had just a second ago.
Sixty-four.
No, sixty-four.
Oh, sixty-four.
Sixty-four. Hang tight. Let me just throw this out in the beginning, so we have clarity. So, when I had one, I brought you one prioritized. And if you look at high school capacity utilization in the out-years, McLean is the highest number. Mr. Wilson brought me Thursday night after your school board meeting, these additional schools of Centerville, Chantilly, and Oakton. And again, to fulfill my responsibility to you all to prioritize, I would prioritize based on the out-years of the high school utilization chart, with McLean as the first one, Centerville is the second one, and Chantilly is the third one. I did not receive anything from anybody else about Falls Church High. As you know, there's renovation planning going on for that school. And for Oakton, which Mr. Wilson also sent me, that would be my last priority, simply because it's going through a renovation right now, and the renovation will be done in another year, a year and a half. So, I just want to set the stage for that. We have the one school that was on the board agenda, and the board will vote on moving that school from page 64 to page 46 about looking at the beginning of a process for a boundary adjustment. And that process begins by, it's not saying it's going to be a boundary adjustment, but it begins to look at it as a, as a potential ability for us to do that, and it starts with a scoping study. So, again, I got a few after the school board meeting. They're in, their priority is in line with the chart on page 64, and staff will be glad to take any questions. Right now, what's before the board from your agenda and for the next meeting is McLean. Thank you.
So, Mr. Plattenberg, did you have anything to add to that before we start our conversation?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to start with Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. And again, just to cap it, the reason I came forward is that if we do nothing, McLean becomes the most overcrowded. And what is unusual is that there appears to be an opportunity for significant capacity in the next school over within geographic proximity, et cetera. And in order to bring this forward, so that the community can begin to participate in the discussion, it is important that some action come forward. Otherwise, we're left with rumors and angst, and we need to bring this into the light of day, so there can be a discussion. And my preference is to, my recommendation is that we need to be careful. First of all, McLean is not slated for renovation anytime soon. They may need a, an addition at some point, that's, you know, further down the line. But because there appears to be excess capacity in a neighbor, neighboring school just down the road, I think that since the taxpayers have already paid for a beautiful renovation and expansion at Langley, to leave significant space at that school underutilized, I think breaks face with the taxpayers who've already paid for this. And at the same time, we have to be careful not to push anybody out of the Langley pyramid. I think that would also be disingenuous. We've already heard, we have community members who do not want to have a situation which would then either overcrowd Langley or indicate that some portion of the current population is going to be sent somewhere else. First of all, there's, there are no other adjoining high schools that have any excess capacity, and I want to put to rest any rumors that any portion of the Langley pyramid is going to be asked to leave. No, they are not. That makes no sense to do that. And I think to be responsible stewards of how we use our facilities, we need to have the opportunity to begin to scope this, to see what is a reasonable way forward, and that that discussion needs to be open and public, where the community helps to make a decision of what seems to be the best resolution for students, for teachers, for the community, for the taxpayer. And one of the difficulties at McLean, it is a very constrained site, and it cannot accommodate a really large trailer park that has difficulty, not just, again, for the faculty and the students, it has difficulty for the community, and it's just not fair. And I think we would not be good stewards if we didn't bring this forward for a public conversation, to come to a reasonable solution. And again, in my amendment, it does not amend page 89 to remove an addition somewhere in the future. So, that is, still remains in this CIP, which we approved last January. So, my amendment only pertains to the beginning of a scoping, to take a look at a boundary change that would bring some relief
Ms. Strauss, you have three minutes.
To McLean, and would help to use some of that excess, excess capacity at Langley. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen?
Great, thank you. And I support Janie wholeheartedly in those remarks. I will not repeat them. I do, however, have one question. I'd be grateful if we could pull up that chart that had the high schools that was up there a few minutes ago. Okay, wonderful. So, looking at this, and scrolling down slightly, many of us were at West Springfield High School last Friday night, and, you know, for the brand-new renovation, beautiful school. However, not only is it overcrowded now, it's going to be even more overcrowded in the out-years. And I think this reflects a pattern that I have certainly seen with other schools. The one closest to my heart is Marshall, where we opened the renovated school, and soon thereafter, we were at 110% or whatever. So, I don't know how this keeps happening. Is there a larger issue at play here, where we complete these renovations, and immediately after they're completed, they're overcrowded? Is this a systemic issue? What's causing this?
Well, as you know, we take a look at, Mr. McElveen, we look at the CIP annually and review it for a five-year projection. What you're saying has occurred in a number of instances. With the projections and some of the out-years, we take a look at whether or not that will be decreased in some capacity. Specifically, when we walked around West Springfield, it was a beautiful night, and there was good turnout for people that actually took a look at that. I remember walking by one of the flexible space areas and having the student turn to us and say, "You know what's so awesome about this space?" And I was eager to await what the student said. This is where we got to meet with our first SGA meeting. And then she proceeded to tell me that they had their club meetings in there. Well, I looked at that as instructional space. So, my opportunity was to go back to the principal with my capacity architects to see if they're efficiently utilizing those spaces. But we do have some of those issues. Where we have, our practice is that when we do the renovation, we build it for an additional two classrooms in the case of growth, and if it exceeds that, hopefully, the trend is a bubble. And when we report those trends during the CIP process each year, we talk about what we're seeing at the elementary level and our kindergarten cohort, you know, birth decay ratios, and then we talk about what's happening at the secondary level, where we've seen growth. But you're correct, we've been experiencing that. I think it is an aberration. I think it's a short-term situation. We've had histories of opening new schools. Westfield was one of them, where it was opened overcrowded. And the same thing applies to some of the renovations that we've had. But overall, we've been ahead of that curve, but we have had some experiences where, in the case of West Springfield and others, there has been overcrowding.
And, you know, I raise this because we have two other schools up here, which are currently undergoing renovations. Oakton, which is in the throes of it right now, and Falls Church, which, thanks to the efforts of this board, will very soon be underway. We see some pretty, pretty high numbers there in terms of out-year overcapacity. So, I don't, how are we taking this into account with Oakton and Falls Church in particular?
Yeah, I apologize, Mr. McElveen, and Mr. Smith just reminded me. When you take a look at Centerville, it doesn't include the addition. So, the data set of the percent over, so in other words, as the superintendent mentioned, when you talk about the schools that we do have plans for, it doesn't take into account the reduction of that percent overcrowding, because the community hasn't approved the bond referendum.
Does the, does the Falls Church one include the renovation, or no?
Once it has the construction, and it currently does not include what's in the renovation.
Okay, so just for clarity, Oakton and Falls Church, this, this is still based on their current facility? I'm not clear.
Not Oakton, but Falls Church, yes.
Okay.
Because Oakton is under construction.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of hard to wrap our head around.
Yeah, and some of the feedback in the CIP was for us to annotate that more clearly. I know we may not recall because of our topic, but that was, that point was made when we had the conversations before.
Right. And so, I just end with the final point, the fact that, the fact that Oakton does include its renovated building, and it's still at 110%, you know, I think that, that follows a long pattern of renovated facilities that, you know, have fallen into the same trap. So, whatever we can do as an institution to ameliorate that, we need to do.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
So, this highlights, I believe I am 10 years running for the same request, and I'm going to, yes, two years before I was on the board. The CIP has to have actuals and arrears. All we do is look at a snapshot in time. This is this year's CIP. When I go to last year's CIP, I have the numbers, which are substantially different, which I don't have any explanation. Centerville High School last year was 120% and 128% for '22, '23. And so, the fact that it has remained at, above 115% and climbing, and was 120% last year and 120% this year, precipitates that there's suddenly going to be a drop. And I reference going back, because I have all the CIPs, the CIP facility needs from November of 2014. Concerns: Centerville High School has been significantly overcrowded for a number of years. This was 2014. Due to the recent and projected level of enrollment, it does not appear that the situation will grow more severe. It has grown more severe. Over the next five years, it's projected to have a capacity deficit of 398 seats. Currently, the school has a deficit of 389 seats. So, it was going to get worse, but not that much worse, but it's gotten much worse. Because the school is in a restricted zoning district, facilities and transportation service is not able to add capacity. So, this is my problem, with us not showing, school by school, what the actual trend numbers are for a 10-year membership history on a rolling basis. We are never able to look at these projection numbers. Ah, well, this year, you know, Centerville's only 124%, except last year, it was 128%. So, why did it go down? The total membership didn't go down, it's climbing, and there's been no trend, and in 2014, it had been substantially overcrowded for years. So, this is the problem that we, that we face, is until we demand as a school board and direct the superintendent to have the facilities and transportation services include the numbers and arrears, we can't ever check the math. It's always only a forward-looking five years, and we don't ever know what's happened. So, none of us, except me, because I build spreadsheets so large, they've had to put extra memory on my laptop, because I put all the CIPs together back-to-back, none of you can pull up and say, "What has happened to my school over time?" You can't see, you know, what's happened to Falls Church over time. That's how it kind of slipped out of our peripheral vision, and then we had to climb back so hard. So, I am asking now, because we're going to get, we're getting ready to start the CIP process, that we once and for all have a next step, where we direct that this successive CIP is going to include a 10-year actual membership over time, so that when we have these bubbles, or the building capacity suddenly changes in the next CIP, that we have something to check it against.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I will write that down as a potential next step. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I certainly support Ms. Schultz's request that we have this sort of 10-year trend analysis, so that we can understand the fluctuations. I am having that issue in my district at the elementary school level, where, you know, schools were being projected to decrease significantly, and then this past year, suddenly, it was almost a reverse trend. So, I think it would be helpful, and I anticipate that Mr. Plattenberg's shop, as we've talked about a lot, does not have the adequate staff to really provide the superintendent and the school board with the vast amount of data that's needed for 200 schools and 190,000 students. So, Mr. Plattenberg, that's a shout-out to you that we know you're trying to do what you can with the staffing you've got, and as a board, I think, and this year's budget share, we're going to need to really figure out, how do we build out your staff to address and get some of this, a deeper analysis that Ms. Schultz is talking about? In terms of what we're looking at here, though, now, and today's proposal and the proposed amendment, I believe, in my eight years on the board, that everyone wants to see fewer children in trailers. I've never heard a school board member say, "I think it's great. Let's just keep educating kids in trailers, have teachers working in trailers." That's not the case. So, that's the basic premise. What I see before us is that, Dr. Braybrand, and this is where I was talking about this Thursday night, you and Mr. Plattenberg come to the board with your best operational leadership and recommendations. You've done the analysis to look at all of the information that's in front of us on the CIP, and determine, when you take all this information into context, where do we have the ability, as a division, to do something as quickly as possible that will provide maximum relief to children in trailers? So, Ms. Schultz, I marvel at the challenges that precede our time together on the board that have developed in the overcrowding out west. And it's going to continue to be an issue that we've got to work with the board supervisors to on. I mean, where you allow housing development brings families, brings kids, brings overcrowding. That's not in the school boards. We don't get to pick where the housing develop happens. That's the board and the planning commission. The school board's role is to say, "Okay, the children are at our doorstep. What do we do?" So, I know that this proposal is not in our normal keeping, but what I do understand is Mr. Plattenberg is saying, "I have capacity right now to start doing some scoping on a project that will get kids moved out of trailers quicker." And when you look out west to a lot of the schools that Ms. Schultz, you and Mr. Wilson, you kind of overlap in a lot of the schools out there, Chantilly, Centerville, and then certainly West Springfield, Oakton. I mean, they each...
Fairfax.
Well, I actually, Woodson High School helped alleviate Fairfax a great deal, and now I think Fairfax is...
Woodson's overcrowded.
Well, but, I mean, to a relative extent, what I actually see is, and what I understood, when you're at 100%, that means we're not wasting classroom space, because we've got kids in them. And maybe, Mr. Plattenberg, I guess my question to you would be, for this point is, you've identified this amendment from Ms. Strauss as being the most efficient and effective way we can move kids out of trailers in the time period we have for other schools that don't have space. Out west, we don't have space to move kids into right now. The second question I have is when you look at capacity...
Hang on a second, Ms. McLaughlin.
I have two questions.
You're, you're...
I know, I'm giving my second question.
Dr. Braybrand wanted to...
Well, I just want to get my question under the radar, so that was the, the second question is, speaking to 100%, give the board an idea of when, really in that range, is it 110, is it 120, when we start to hear principals and teachers say, "I don't have a classroom for my kids and my teachers to teach in"? Because I believe the 1 to 110 has some flexibility there.
That is correct, Ms. McLaughlin. I mean, schools with 115% or more are considered to have substantial capacity deficit. 105 to 114%, they're considered to have moderate capacity deficit. 95 to 104%, schools approaching capacity deficit or slight capacity deficit. 85% to 94% schools are considered to have sufficient capacity for current programs and future growth. Less than 85% of schools are considered to have a capacity surplus. Now, I will say that, and I will also state that when you show a difference from one year to the next, you, it is imperative, and that's why this, 10 years, we don't have the data sets to go back 10 years. We have agreed from a planning perspective that it's important to have the history to see where you're going in the future. In order to do that properly, it is imperative to have the contextual reference to those data sets. Each year, what is submitted by each individual principal is based upon their capacity, which includes their program capacity. When we look and make recommendations in our CIP annually, the A through Hs, whether it's a boundary adjustment, potential capacity, or program adjustment potential for board consideration, those recommendations are based on looking at the whole picture. Because you have building capacity, then you have program capacity. The program capacity might be beaten, eaten up by a consumptive program that requires fewer teachers, fewer students, and therefore takes up space, and therefore you lose space. So, when we look at Chantilly, when we make the recommendations about that, when we look at what we're doing with Centerville, we have our capacity architects go out and work with the building principal to help and see if we can not only identify those spaces that can be utilized more efficiently, notwithstanding the facts that have been set around this table already. But it really is not only just the data sets, but also the program and the operational sets, if you will, so we can have the appropriate contextual relevance on each of those.
So, before I go to Mr. Wilson, I do just want to remind board members that the reason for this work session was specifically on this amendment that we have coming up. The CIP is certainly a very broad document, and we could, we have very lengthy conversations about the CIP. So, if board members would focus on the amendment before us, I would appreciate it. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that leads to my very first question, since we do have lengthy conversations annually and the process, actually, the CIP process really probably is starting with the September 30th data that comes in, so in a couple of weeks. My first question is, is why wasn't McLean on page 46, so that we could have that conversation about how to utilize resources versus the various opportunities in the system to apply the capacity that you've got in facilities?
Well, that's a good question. I think when we take a look at the whole revisioning of our policy, of the school board policy, I think it's to make it so that we migrate to a place where we have a process that is transparent, that identifies needs on an annualized basis as a part of the CIP program. Previously, in boards of past, it had been something that was more organic. If individual board members had a desire to have something added, they were added. That did not allow for, if you think about it, the three-at-large members to identify needs. So, I think it was a part of the commitment of this body to go ahead and make things more transparent. I don't know specifically how that aspect did not get enveloped into it. Certainly, in the 186-page document, we have a number of schools, and we looked at page 64, that talked about all of the high schools. It was clear that that was rated the highest from staff's perspective, that was adopted and proved by the school board, and perhaps in the clarity of this new policy, we'll be able to migrate from whatever is the highest priority, have a deeper dive in conversation in public, and perhaps then have it be on page 46, which is the prioritization of the board that historically has been used for staff to go out and do the scoping and so forth. I know that's not a good answer to your question, Mr. Wilson, but it is the answer that I have.
Well, I appreciate that candor. You're right, it doesn't really answer my question, because all of us as board members, you know, we take our time to go through the CIP, and we go through the process of public hearings, and then we vote on the CIP in January. And as I said at the last board meeting, this feels like we're corrupting our own process to add McLean High School in three-quarters of the way, or farther, into the CIP year. And that's where I think the community, and I have, I have the greatest respect for the folks in McLean, and I, I definitely feel for their situation of overcrowding there, but I got to tell you, my own daughter's at Oakton High School, and the stories that we heard from the dais, she tells me every day at Oakton High School. And, and so, this, so I just, I think, in my own view, this should wait to the next CIP discussion. I don't think it would actually change anything, you know, in terms of the timing of the application of the reboundering, if that's what we end up doing with this, because that's going to happen after you do the scoping, after we have community meetings, and that's going to happen subsequent down the road. I don't think rushing it now makes a lot of sense, because we, right now, we don't have that capacity to do all the balancing of your available capacity as staff to begin this work. All we know is that McLean somehow has risen to the top of the list. So, with that in mind, one question about McLean. When I looked, I saw that there were a number of trailers there. Is there, my understanding is that if we were to put quads there, it actually would change their capacity that they would have at the school? If, is that a true, is that a true statement? Do, if we, if we were to use quads instead of trailers, would that change their capacity numbers?
When we take a look at a actual quad, and I think you might be referring to a modular...
Or a modular, right.
Yes, sir. When, you know, in the spring of 2019, four temporary classrooms were added to the existing 14 temporary classrooms. From McLean's side, when you have 18 temporary classrooms, you could exchange some of those out. Well, that's what we were looking at doing, is exchanging them out for modular. However, a modular is a capital improvement program expense to the tune of approximately $3 million that is capitalized. The unique opportunity that was articulated by Ms. Strauss, and the conditions that exist currently for this, about having a situated school close by with capacity, really would make staff's recommendation not to put that modular in there. When we actually looked at putting that modular in and taking out those spaces, we encroached on some of the athletic practice space on the other side of the facility. We think we could get one in, but it would have been really, really tight, and it would have had to have been a smaller module. So, that's why we ended up going the route that we did.
So, I believe...
Mr. Wilson? I'm happy to put you on a go back.
Yeah, put me on a go back.
All right. Ms. Kees, tomorrow.
Thank you. Well, I do agree, I've had quite a bit of contact with the Drainsville, our Drainsville constituents, and this is of a great deal of concern, as is all of the situations that people have brought. I, you know, I agree that this needs to be addressed. I'm also concerned about how we're communicating with that community and make sure they understand what we're doing, because there's a great deal of misinformation that is harmful, I think, to our reputation. So, I would say, in addition to getting to the public comment period, I think we need to take some steps, Dr. Braybrand, to make sure that we are communicating directly with that community beyond, you know, say, a press release, which is much more nebulous, but, so that the parents can know that we are having this discussion... But, so that the parents can know that we are having this discussion, what we are contemplating, how we plan to include the public, how we want to hear their concerns. I know that I have been contacted with respect to, I think, some new... Was it trailers, Mr. Plattenberg, that went in, or quads? That went in this year to try to deal with some of the capacity issues? And I, you know, I don't know that there was communication with the community that that was how we were going to proceed. So I would love to use this kind of as a test case to try to up our game a little bit on... There is a great deal of sensitivity with respect to these issues. And so we do need to do a better job in communicating that we're concerned. And so I think that that is what I want to bring to this discussion. And I know we had a number of folks at the meeting last Thursday, they had their own ideas as to perhaps this, how this would be dealt with. But that could be flushed out during that public comment period.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Ms. Darrenak-Kofax to be followed by Ms. Corbett-Sanders, to be followed by Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. I am, I am supportive of this amendment that's coming out here. But a couple of things, as I agree with a lot of the statements Ms. Keys-Gamar just made. There's a lot of talk out there, there's a lot of misinformation, and there is a lot of damaging information, that's reputational, damaging to our reputation. So, a couple of things, and I spoke to these at the board table the other night. One of the things that, you know, we, we do as a board, or we do as a system, we try to keep community schools, so we add trailers, and then we get to a point where we can add no more. That's sometimes why you need to talk about boundary changes. We talked about this a little bit the other night. You know, you're telling me, colleagues are telling me, West Springfield's at capacity already. I believe emphatically that that's a result of an administrative boundary change that went well beyond the 5%. And that is a problem. That is a problem, and that's why we need to talk about that. So all of these things that kind of weave together. But ultimately, I am asking and telling the staff, and I agree with Ms. Schultz, somehow we need to have a analysis, a trend analysis over years. And Scott, if their team isn't able to do this, we need to get them help, because it's imperative that, you know, Mr. Wilson, you said, you know, "How did that get there?" And, you know, we're like, not exactly sure. And we are, again, I think we are a very dedicated board, we are a very active board. But when you talk about doing trend analysis over 192 schools and facilities, and we can't do that. I appreciate that some of my colleagues have the desire to do that, and the want. But then we wouldn't find ourselves in this place, I think. So I am... I'm not trying to point fingers, I'm just trying to think about ways to improve processes. Because this has... This is hard. And we have a lot of other courageous conversations we're going to have to have that involve schools that are overcrowded, and why are they overcrowded? And why are some other schools, is there flight from them? And all of this directly impacts the CIP. And, and you can only do so much, and we as a system have to bring all these pieces together and figure out what are the best practices with CIPs and boundaries? And how can we... And then it goes to reputation of the schools, and why are some schools having so many people wanting to go to them where other schools don't? So it's, it's all part and parcel, and it's a big question. And I, you know, that's not exactly what we're talking about today, but McLean is a result of many of those factors I just listed.
Thank you, Ms. Darrenak-Kofax. Ms. Corbett-Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad to follow Ms. Darrenak-Kofax, but I'm also, I want to address something that has become increasingly a trend on this board, and it's one that is a bit upsetting. And that is a trend to use hyperbole and inflammatory rhetoric to misrepresent the actions of this board. And so when we use terms like corrupt, it is not accurate. It is used in a manner to be inflammatory, and it is politically motivated. I would suggest that we, as a board, should self-govern and to try to be much more intentional in how we interact with each other and how we interact with the public, to make sure that we are... We continue to be genuine and transparent and hold ourselves accountable. From there, I would like to talk a little bit about something that is very important, because we constantly talk about fiscal responsibility and accountability and transparency. And I am very appreciative of Mr. Plattenberg talking about the fiscal responsibility associated with doing what is relative, is a relatively easy amendment to the CIP, which is to utilize capacity at a school, which was built into a school. I don't, don't quite understand why the other school was built to the extent it was, but obviously, it was deemed to be necessary. And now we have capacity at one school, and a neighboring school has not only a lack of capacity, but it doesn't have the grounds to be able to accommodate more space for trailers. And so I would suggest that this is a responsive amendment to a community concern, and I am happy to support it. I would also welcome, and I think, Ms. Schultz, you were spot on by the importance of being able to look at trend analysis. And I'm going to suggest that, in the same way that we, we address student outcomes very intentionally, and we share the data for Project Momentum with each individual board member, I think we need a similar approach for dealing with the capacity and facility needs of each of the regions. And so we should, if you don't mind, Ms. Schultz, I'm going to piggyback on your idea and suggest that if, as a next step, the superintendent come back to us with a recommendation on how we can do that more intentionally. Because what, the reason we are talking about boundary policy is because we have these anomalies throughout the whole CIP, and we know that we cannot build our way out of the current situation. And so having those intentful conversations about where capacity is needed and where there might be some excess capacity, and how we can ensure that we be laser-focused on how we can best utilize our facilities, is going to be critical. Because you always talk about the impact on students. There is a direct impact on students when they are faced with being in an overcrowded facility.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. Ms. Palchuk?
Yes, thank you. Two quick notes. Number one, as I've stated in our past conversations on this, very happy to support this. Number two, I think our big question has been about process, assuming full positive intent on what the process is/was when I came into the board, trying to understand it and trying to improve the process, I think, going forward. I know that Ms. Strauss did try to add this when, when it came about how the process worked versus didn't work, and so there's definitely confusion about that. So I guess I would say, yes, absolutely support this amendment. And I would ask staff, as you come back for our next CIP, or when we start having discussions with the CIP, I think you've mentioned some recommendations, but do you have some specific ones of how to address this page moving forward? I know you have some ideas, but I think absolutely, as a board, we need to be clear about how page 46 works. And I know we're looking at our boundary process, so that might be a longer conversation. But I do think it's important that we and the public understand how, how schools are recommended for, there are two lists on here, not just one. So the top list and the bottom list. And I would support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to go-backs, if you could go back to page 64. That's me, yeah. So I did raise with the superintendent and Mr. Plattenberg that we do have a difficult situation at Justice High School. And so the reason I asked for us to go here, the solution at Justice High School is an addition, and I very much appreciate the fact that we are in the process of creating an addition, planning for it. However, that's, that's three years into the future. And so I guess my question on, on this page, since it relates to, to what we're doing, is I, if... We now have 2,311 students at Justice High School, even though it was projected for 2,191. And do we have a solution for, an immediate solution for, for that situation? And doesn't that school now belong on this page?
Yeah, well, that's why what we're doing is taking a look, and when we come in, what was mentioned about September 30th data, we'll be coming back with the revisions adjusted to it. We did have a little bit of growth in justice that was not anticipated. But I can tell you that we are working with the principal, we are working on looking at spatialization to make sure that we can accommodate those additional students. I do want to make a point that what is going on with the statements that are being made, I just want to remind the body that the work that you have been doing, you have been taking a look, and this is a compliment, at exactly what has been impacting the CIP. You've been looking at programs with Mr. Presidio and, and his team, looking at how the programs are deployed, the Advanced Academic Placement Program, if you will, and where it's going to go with consultant outside group coming in as well. You have also been looking at the transfer policy and the impact that it has on capacity. And you've looked at also placement of programs, where we've placed programs in the past, whether they be French immersion programs, whether they be gifted and talented or engineering and science programs, in schools that had a lower capacity. But as the neighborhoods have turned over, and the general membership has grown, in addition to a program that was placed in a school that had capacity, you are taking a look at a body as to how we can improve those processes. So it is to be lauded that you are doing that work. And I do believe that looking at ways to provide that historical data in the CIP with the contextual elements will really comprehensively do what I believe has been brought up on a number of occasions here tonight.
So I can appreciate that, Mr. Plattenberg. But I still would like to know if, if Justice High School isn't, isn't now really eligible for that top list now? Because I think there, if my math is right, they're at 116% of capacity now, aren't they?
We're still taking a look at Justice, and we do, that's why September 30th data. When I mentioned that, Ms. Evans, your conversations with the principal are accurate. That's why we're working with the principal right now. But we don't just state on this date that that is going to be what it's going to be. The September 30th data has to be cleansed. It takes us two weeks, now we're getting back into the CIP conversation. It takes us two weeks to cleanse that data through our friends in DIT.
So we'll see it in the new CIP?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll see it in the new...
Yes, ma'am, and we'll have a deeper dive in conversation.
And just to be clear...
Not only about that, but about Centerville, Oakton, et cetera, Chantilly.
Just to be clear, I'm not suggesting it go on page 64, or on page 46, because we have a different solution. My only concern is making sure that that, which is now a very, to my mind, a high priority school, that it gets attention, the attention it needs without going on page 46. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. As I stated at the last group of the meeting, I support it, providing a remedy for overcrowding situation in McLean. When we had a work session on CIP earlier this year, and I support that today, and I would support it at the next meeting for this amendment. What I want to urge my board members to consider is that, you know, after we take a vote at the next meeting, that we really try to find the solutions, you know, starting, starting August next year, rather than delaying it another, another square year. In my mind, that there isn't really, you know, enough reasons, you know, for us to, you know, push students go through this very overcrowded, overcrowded learning environment for another year.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I have three go-backs. Hopefully, we can go quickly, since we do have a number of people waiting for our next work session. And we don't have any action on this today, although we do have one next step that I've heard. So with that, I have Ms. Schultz.
So I want to address a couple of things. Are we, my first question is, are you contemplating that whatever you're going to do for McLean, you're only going to move students from the McLean boundary to the Langley boundary?
Is that directed at me?
I don't know who else it would be directed at.
Well, Ms. Schultz, the scoping process is where we go out to the community, and we elicit their feedback as to what they would like to see. We bring it in a fully transparent process, we post it on the website, we bring it back to the board for their approval.
I'm having them stop the clock.
Anyway, the process is that the scoping that was alluded to is going out to the community, getting their feedback. Many of you have attended those public meetings.
I just want a very simple answer to a very simple question. Are you only contemplating moving students in the McLean boundary to the Langley boundary? Or, because McLean has like an island that's very close to Falls Church, it has an island that's closer to Herndon, are you only contemplating moving students from McLean to Langley under this process?
Staff's view on this is taking, and with all due respect, my answer is about the process. Staff's view from a professional opinion is that there is a perfect solution to the immediacy of that problem, which is exactly what you just stated. However, I have learned that going out into the public, that a lot of times, the community provides hybrid solutions to include grandfathering, open enrollment, I believe some of the members of the audience were suggesting. And that feedback, you know, it is not predetermined by staff, and I think the board can appreciate this, to go out and get community feedback, that ultimately, the board will be voting on this. So this will be the board's decision. So when you ask me, I can give you staff's perspective, and it is what you say. But if I ask you, there are 12 members that may have different perspectives.
Okay, all right. So, and this is where, instead of becoming reactive about definitions, I do think it's fair to say, I'm not saying anybody is corrupt, I am saying there is a corruption of the process. This board in January voted down exactly this amendment. There was exactly this approach to saying, giving the claim relief and the CIP, and this board didn't include that. And this notion that Centerville, you know, well, they have relief on the horizon, so we don't need to do anything about them. You know, I have just demonstrated that years, years, not one, or two, or three, or four, many, many years of overcrowding have pressed on, on Centerville. And they're now converting workrooms into academic space. That's how bad it is. So the fact that we've weighed one community and selected one community for relief, we don't have any CIP money going to Centerville to build anything, this CIP. We don't have any CIP money to build anything in the next CIP in two years. We finally have money going to the CIP for building something in, not this one, not the next one, but the one after that. So, so it's going to be a decade before you have construction that relieves. And as we're seeing, as Ryan pointed out, we're building, and then the second the renovation is finished, we're already overcrowded. This is why we need the documentation over time. I mean, student projection methodology, you guys have heard me say, "We need this not at a countywide, who cares if we get within one or one and a half percent at a countywide? We need it specifically school by school." I am concerned that one of the things that was referenced was how we do in-building. And I think, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, you brought that up. There's this in-building done by the board of supervisors that negatively impacts us, and we have no control over it. It's getting worse. I brought it up at the Joint Board of Supervisors Environmental Meeting, and I was actually, a lot of people on the other, on the other board said, "Oh, no, 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 we're, we're planting more trees." No, you're ripping down trees, you're in-building, and you're putting in communities that are putting pressure on us, and we don't have a solution to it.
We need to move on.
I know, but my last request, because it's actually a next step in addition to the 10-year, I remember about six or seven years ago, I identified the Prince William CIP puts neighborhoods in their CIP, and the housing, the types of housing, and the yields from each neighborhood to do projections on a rolling forward basis. I think that would put a lot of pressure on the board of supervisors to be more cooperative with us in the planning of those developments. And so I'd also like to get us a neighborhood model of, and of the formula that yields students also into our CIP. model of, and of the formula that yields students also into our CIP.
I have three more go-backs. Hopefully, you can see, we have a lot of people in the audience, and they've been waiting patiently for two hours for us to get to the next conversation. So again, we don't have any action other than possibly next step. So if people could be very succinct, I would appreciate it. Ms. Strauss?
Oops, wait. Just to clarify, there was no vote on this. This is the first time this amendment has come for a vote. And because there is excess capacity in the neighboring school, it is a no-cost partial solution. It doesn't solve everything. But it is a no-cost solution with the community at the table, and we desperately need the community at the table with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. So I don't think, since I butt on the board, that anything of this level of magnitude at this point in the CIP calendar year has ever happened. So, you know, the, you know, folks might not like my language when I say this is a, we're corrupting our own process by doing this mid, at this point in the school year. But, you know, rather than ignore our process, if we really want to improve our process, we need to stay the course and make changes, as opposed to committing resources three quarters downstream to get this done. I will say also this, while Ms. Schultz was asking her question about where those kids were going to go, Ms. Strauss, whose school this is, was nodding her head, yes, they're going to go to Langley High School, looking, while looking at Mr. Plattenberg. Now, Mr. Plattenberg was very careful. But if you don't think, as a community, that there isn't already, you know, the scoping, talking about scoping, but this is a decision by this board to move children right now. This isn't about starting scoping. This is about a decision to move kids from McLean to Langley. And if it's not, then we can put it through the normal CIP process and weigh all the different options, weigh our new policy, as opposed to jamming in this room right now.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamar, and then we will wrap up.
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize that what this comes down to is not a corruption of the process, it's not a deviation of the process. We always, as a board, have an opportunity to bring forward amendments and to amend action of the board. And given that we have empty seats at a neighboring high school, and we are trying to get as many children out of trailers as possible, I think it's extremely responsible, and I would believe that if we took this out to the public, they would applaud this board for looking at a scoping opportunity that can happen five months earlier. I'm not willing to sit for five more months till the next CIP gets decided upon, while Mr. Plattenberg's shop says they can start now at looking at a neighboring high school has empty seats, a neighboring high school has overcrowded capacity. So all we're doing is saying, here is a project we can address. Ms. Schultz, you absolutely know your schools and know the overcrowding of the facilities, and I look forward to being able to have our board work with Superintendent Braybrand and Mr. Plattenberg to examine what's currently in the CIP, and is there anything we can do sooner. But given many of the schools you've cited have either renovations coming up, we don't want to boundary out children in your communities when they have a renovation that may address it, because families do like being in their neighborhood schools. They do not want to be boundaried out if they don't have to be. And so, Mr. Wilson, to your point, we can identify that there's empty seats over there at Langley, and that there's a boundary we could move these McLean kids in. What Mr. Plattenberg's saying is, all that being said, of course, we would honor our process, which is engage the community, and why we've identified a potential solution. We have a potential solution. Anyone at this table knows we have a potential solution on the table. Now we will honor the public and go out and bring to them, you've got empty seats here, and you've got overcrowded here. Do you want to get those kids out of trailers? Here's our proposal. Give us your ideas as well. And then this board will have to end up making an important decision. But I think we've got a good opportunity here to get the process started five minutes sooner, five months sooner.
Actually, in less than 90 days, we'll have a new proposal.
Ms. Keys-Gamar, Ms. Keys-Gamar?
But the work won't start, Mr. Wilson, he has said, we can gain as much as five months by doing this now.
Okay, Ms. Keys-Gamar?
So, just to put this in perspective a little bit, I'll just take a little bit of my time to do this. I have received, I want to say, hundreds of letters on this issue, and I have spoken to a number of people in the Drainsville issues, in the Drainsville area, who are concerned about this issue. And they have proposed a solution. There are more than one, I have heard about more than one solution, but we have a responsibility to go to the community. And as I said, I do have those concerns about communication. So I do support this. I think we started on this journey not really being able to address some of this because of the administrative boundary change that, with respect to how we were going to address that, because we were trying to create a more transparent process. And I think that was the right thing to do. We brought that to a halt, to stop the hemorrhaging of some, you know, to use a medical metaphor. And we did that. And so now that we're on the other side of that evaluation, I think this is the right thing to do. I also want to piggyback on something Ms. Schultz said, as well as Ms. Corbett Sanders. I just heard today, or there's an article about inter-county cooperation with respect to economic development, and nobody taking the lead, but it being considered of how one is impacting the other. And I think with respect to capacity, we may need to look at that with respect to how we're, that issue with respect to how we interface with the county, and particularly, you know, some of the rules, the state rules that govern the Planning Commission and what they can do. We have been impacted by building. We went to West Springfield High School the other day, and Ms. Schultz told me all about all the trees that were about to come down, and the houses that were coming in. And we have absolutely no control over that. We get an announcement, and we have to deal with it. And so I would like to suggest that we explore possibly greater cooperation in this area, because I do think that the county has concerns, I guess, about how the schools are handling the capacity issues, I've heard. But at the same time, perhaps they need to hear some of the issues that are being created. And understanding is always a positive thing, don't you think? So I would put that down as part of my second next step, yes.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please call up? That's excellent. Thank you for yielding back your time. Could we see the next steps? Could you blow it up a little bit? And this is, this is next steps for the CIP. Okay, the first one is Ms. Schultz directed successive CIP will include 10-year membership over time. Ms. Corbett Sanders, I think you, you had said you were going to piggyback on Ms. Schultz's.
The concept is that not only do we want the CIP to have the 10-year membership trends over ti, or the trend analysis, but more importantly is...
And I want to clarify, because I know Mr. Plattenberg is over there getting very, has much consternation with this. Look, we can, they can tell us whatever number they want to pick, but I can pull up in the student history back, I think, 10 years to 2006. So we can say, and I know we've talked about the September membership number, but I want to remind everybody, that is not the high watermark in a year. The data shows that typically January, February is our high watermark. And so, you know, whatever it is that they want to recommend, I think we should pick a consistent data point. I don't believe necessarily that September 30th is the best number. But I would suggest that they come back, they pick a single data point, and there will have to be an asterisk now and again, if they have added a quad, if they whatever. But we need transparency and clarity that the question is, well, if you add a quad, then all of a sudden, your capacity changes. That's up to them to bring back to us. I just want to clarify that and sort of, you know, quell Mr. Plattenberg's concerns.
What concerns do you have about this, Mr. Plattenberg?
I love the data points, and I think Ms. Schultz is spot on, as many members. We do need to begin the conversation. But it is absolutely imperative that when we go back for 10 years, and this is the part that we've had discussions about, since I've been here, we've been tracking what decisions boards have made, what decisions on instructional programs have been made. When full-day kindergarten went into place, we saw a major uptick across the division. It wasn't reflected in the CIP data sets. So when you have program initiatives, and we talk about early childhood, and we talk about pupil teacher ratios, when I say the contextual elements, I agree, the data needs to be there. And Ms. Schultz has been providing me with her data sets, and we've gone and had multiple meetings about this. And we agree, we just are building the quilt from different threads from different ends. The staff that I'm working with now is keen on making sure that we have the past so we can inform the future. But I think that contextual relationship and the asterisk point was a good compromise. We need to get started. I do agree with that.
So as it's written now, Mr. Plattenberg, is that something...
I was going to say five years, but, you know, whatever the body, we can come back with what we can do, and we can provide what we can provide.
Okay. And then, with Ms. Corbett Sanders' follow-in motion, she's asking the superintendent to give us recommendations on how to do this. So I think that's, that would be something that he could work with staff on. Now, as far as include in CIP a neighborhood model formula that...
I sent different language. Let me read what, let me read what I sent. Include in the CIP a neighborhood yield model which identifies, yield model which identifies student yield by neighborhoods and types of housing units included, including projected developments.
Is that doable, Mr. Plattenberg? Do you have that currently?
Yeah, we do report out, as a part of our trend analysis, we do report out our accuracy based upon data sets and type. What you will find in a place like Prince William, and you will find in a place like Loudon, where I came from prior to being here, is you have new construction. And where there is new construction, having that is absolutely imperative. I think to better inform our populace, we'd also be able to identify areas where we see transitions. Those aren't through the zoning process. If it's, for example, if in the Vienna area, where residential units are being torn down and rebuilt to have multiple spaces in terms of rooms within those homes, that younger families are moving in, and we're seeing a higher yield. We don't have a process that captures...
So if I could just cut you off for a minute, if this language is acceptable to you as it is, and then you would develop what you think is reasonable, does that work for you? Okay. And then I think, Ms. Keys-Gamar, did you have one other?
I have two, because... Identifying clear communication to this community with respect to what our next steps are, and how we are addressing this in light of this discussion.
You mean about McLean specifically?
Yes, from the superintendent to the residents impacted by this discussion.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Dr. Braybrand? Okay. And then the second one, wait, I'm letting her finish. I'm assuming she understands, because our identifying Clerk Ms. Gamar with respect to what our next, oh, okay, with respect to next step, okay. I was thrown off by the "R" at the end of the sentence. Okay. All right. And then the next one, I just talked to Dr. Braybrand really briefly about asking our superintendent to explore a possible ways to collaborate and corroborate with the county to discuss capacity issues within FCPS as it relates to building and county initiatives, I'll just say county initiatives. Does that cover it?
So Ms. Keys-Gamar, I would just humbly suggest, actually, it's not that we want to ask the superintendent. This is board to board, and I'd really like to make sure we keep that in our purview. I'd like to ask our chair, our chair of the board, to go to their chair of the board and say, we've got to get better partnerships on this.
I'm sorry, but if you recall, the CPDC, a presentation that I did in July, this is exactly what CPDC is intending to do as part of its work product, is exactly this.
So I am looking for something that resembles a task force. I am not discussing whether, I think we may need to have further discussion whether CPDC is involved in that, or I'm not sure how to do, but I just whispered into the superintendent's ear as to how we go forward, and I think that, that I'm just going to...
Ms. Keys-Gamar, you're correct, we could ask.
Hang on a second, Ms., hang on. Ms. Darnett-Kofax?
I just have some comments on that. Eight years on this board, we have collaborated, we have cooperated, we have gotten nowhere. I'm going to be very blunt about it. Don't think, I appreciate good intentions, I appreciate all of this outreach, but it doesn't matter if you have Board of Supervisors members and Planning Commission members who are putting hundreds of houses. And, but what I'm saying is, that's, that ends up what's happening. There is a way to collaborate and cooperate. Chair to chair is one thing, but that doesn't get you anywhere. That gets a chair to chair conversation. It's going to need a retreat, it's going to need, it's going to need intensive, intensive scrutiny, and intensive work product in order to change a mindset that, exactly what we've all said, we are left with decisions that impact us greatly, that negatively impact us, but there is no movement, and has not been, at least on the eight years that I've been on this board, after extensive outreach on this issue. So I would welcome, I would welcome you to, you know, county executive, to county executive, chair to chair, all of these things. I support this. And whatever way we need to do it, I don't think we need a defined path, I think we need multiple paths, including CPDC.
Could I suggest that we're getting a little bit off topic here?
No, but we're talking, we're talking about 58.
We are, but no, but what I'm saying is, this goes well beyond the amendment that we're discussing here, our work session today. This goes into a huge issue that, you know, Ms. Schultz is right, CPDC has looked at it, the Planning Commission and the Schools Committee has looked at it. I don't oppose this, I think it's in keeping with it. But I think we have to be very careful, again, that we're not just going back to huge CIP issues.
Well, at a minimum, I would like for my colleagues to understand or know that this is what I'm thinking about. If we are to work with the superintendent to try to see how best to do that, because we've tried a number of avenues in the past, I agree with you, those Planning Commission discussions probably are not enough. And so we may try to look, try to explore some more effective ways. And I just, in light of the article that I saw today, that they're cooperating with other counties, I think that we can cooperate with Fairfax Public Schools. And so perhaps we need to take a fresh look at that. That is the intent. And so I'm happy to work with Dr. Braybrand and whomever else to try to figure out how we can be more effective here.
Do you want to remove it from the next step here, or...
I don't want to remove it from the next.
All right. Ms. McLaughlin?
No, I just, I...
And again, please, please let's wrap up, because we do have...
Look, being succinct, we're overcomplicating this. It's, no, it's there, I'm supportive of it, Ms. Darnett-Kofax spoke to it. We all don't need to beat this. We're trying to basically say, between now and the next CIP, let's just have that macro-level awareness. Keep it there so they know where our intent is, and just vote and move on.
But I will also probably bring a forum topic, if that helps. I'll discuss it with the superintendent.
All right. Is everybody okay with these as they are written now?
Yep.
Okay. With that, this work session is adjourned. We will take a five-minute break, and then we will do our final work session on equity. Thank you so much.